Hello, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, May 27. Once again, we are joining you remotely. First item on our agenda is approval of minutes, and we do have a number of minutes to approve. The first order of minutes is from May 13, which is the business meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Sorry, guys, I just totally lost my ability to see anybody. Dave, is there a second on this motion?
I'll second. This is Maya.
Thank you, Maya. All right, second by Maya, but now I can see everybody again. So all in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All right, wonderful, 5-0, thank you. Next, we have to approve the executive session minutes from May 13 at 6:30. All five of us were in that executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, 5-0. Then we had a second executive session on May 13 at 8:50, and only the four of us, not Mara, were in that session. Motion to approve those minutes?
Seconded.
Thank you, Dave. All right, you made a motion. Is there a second on that?
Seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mara, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye for one extension, all right? Great. And then last set of minutes is executive session on May 15 at 11:30 in the morning. Once again, it was only the four of us, not Mara. So is there a motion to approve those? Thank you. First by Joan, second by Maya, all in favor?
Aye.
For extension? All right, great, thank you. On the agenda, it does say correspondence, but if it's okay with the committee, I'd like to hold off on that correspondence until we get to later in the agenda, the legislative advocacy, because those are tied together. So moving along now to Lawrence. Dave Catania, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes. Last week, $19,736.20, $35,032.85, $103,711.98, $86,655.25, $301,703.20, $75,725.30, $403,955.55, $60,476,74, $450,137.65, per grand total of $1,537,134.22.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions on the warrants that Dave signed on our behalf? Great, thank you. So at this time, it is public forum. As we have been doing over the last couple of months, public forum is via our email account. At this time, I do not see any emails that came in to be read at public forum, but just as a reminder to the community, if you do have anything that you would like to be read at our next meeting on June 3, you can email us at NPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12.us. So at this time, we'll move right along to announcements. Dr. Thompson, any announcements this evening?
I do.
Okay. So now we're moving right along into parents', and we do have a number of our wonderful principals joining us this evening for school improvement plans. Dr. Frazek is also sharing with us the handbook for the middle school. So we do have Dr. Frazek up first on the Quigley Middle School Handbook and Improvement Plan.
Hi, everybody. I have a pretty quick PowerPoint to show. I'm going to do my best to share my screen and talk through the PowerPoint. We'll see how that works. Sorry. Just a second. And can everybody see my screen? It's always the hard part, is I can't see what everybody else can see. Can I ask, can you see my screen?
Yeah, yeah, Margo.
Yeah, we can hear it.
I can see it.
Great. Thank you. So just two things to share tonight are handbook. This year, we didn't do a ton of changes to the handbook. The school council did sort of a deep dive in. We had changed quite a few things last year, so didn't do as many changes this year, no major policy changes. They did recommend that we, as a staff, that we review our homework policy over the next school year, which we are planning to do. And they made an excellent suggestion that I never even thought about, but doing sort of a handbook at a glance page and improve the overall formatting, so it was a little bit easier to find. So if you take a look at yours, you'll see it's a Word document now that we're putting into PDF, just because Google Docs just really didn't work that way for us. And then the first page really just kind of outlined some of the big things that parents look for, whether it's dress code, attendance. We put sort of a little blurb about discipline and things like that in there. So as I said, there weren't a lot of major changes. Really, the big thing was kind of adding that handbook at a glance page. And I'll just stop there really quick in case there are questions about the handbook, and then go to the school improvement plan. This is just like my faculty meeting.
Doesn't appear to be any questions for you.
Good. No questions? All right. I'm going to go ahead and go on. So even with the school shutdown, we had made some really good progress on our goals, as hopefully you saw in the document I sent. We pretty much have an SEL plan up and running. Guidance counselors have created. We're at our third year, so three sets of social-emotional learning plans, one for each term for a three-year cycle. And we have the universal tier of positive behavior intervention and support. That's our CMS Pride implemented. Co-teaching, we got a lot more teachers trained this year, some right in March, so kind of right before the deadline, which was really amazing that we were able to do that, which I think has had a really positive impact on our online learning. Our writing PD was the one that kind of ended up getting cut short, but so we're putting it into next year's plan, doing keys to literacy. We had started that reboot last year. We were going to make sure that our new teachers were getting trained. This year, we have about 15 to 20 teachers that haven't been trained, so we're going to work on that for next year. We got our RTI for ELA and math, both scheduled into our elective block. Have about 30 kids per grade for each subject area that are participating in that. We'll continue that next year. We did some curriculum development last summer, and we'll hopefully be able to do some more this summer. And we had an incredibly successful implementation of Project Lead the Way for Grade 7 Computers. We had some amazing projects come out at the end of Term 1, and a small group of Grade 8 students that did it with our librarian as well. So these are our students, the small group of 8th grade students happened to be primarily our English language learning students that just aren't able to take a foreign language. So it was nice to be able to put them in something meaningful, as opposed to kind of try and find places for them. So that's kind of an update on last year's plan. Any questions about that? And I can't see you, so... All right, I'm going to go on to this year's plan. And so we have three major goals. We're going to continue to, and this is a two-year plan, so we're going to continue to build on our positive school culture, making sure that we are reflecting the diversity within the school. That's one thing that's really come out of the work that we've done so far on cultural proficiency, is that if you walk into our school building or you go into our lessons, it doesn't always look like we are a school of 15% African-American, and growing EL population, students from, you know, 20-plus countries around the world. So we're going to work on that by continuing to work on cultural proficiency. We're going to start working on our Tier 2 PBIS. This is still our CMS Pride. So the universal tier is where we work on sort of what are the expectations for everyone. Tier 2 are for those students that struggle to sort of have regular school. It's kind of weird to say that right now, but regular school work for them, and we find some interventions. And then we're adding in, UDL is Universal Design for Learning. So it's really looking at, are we designing lessons? Are we designing our school in a manner that is accessible for all kids? And our co-teaching piece. So that's all kind of wrapped into Goal 1 with our positive school culture. Goal 2 is, as I said, we're really kind of moving that writing goal right into the next year, because that did not get where we wanted it to go. Our ELA staff has done a great job creating a 6- to 12 writing rubric. We want to expand it, so that is a school-wide writing rubric, which takes a little bit of work, because writing in science and math and social studies and art looks a little bit different than it does in ELA, so we have some work to do there. And we really need to work on building kids' perseverance and persistence with writing. We still very much see that when kids finish writing, they're finished. So trying to get them to that idea that writing is something that is constantly being improved and developed, and you don't write something and then you're done, you write something and you edit and develop. And then finally, really working on a universally designed blended teaching model. It was interesting looking at this over the past few weeks. We had started working on this plan long before we went to remote learning, but it's incredibly important now. So tying to our training in universal design for learning, can we start making more individualized plans for students, for small groups of students, training in our co-teaching model? And, you know, really looking at, one change, I would say, is that really looking at how does this impact what we're doing with remote learning? So hopefully, we'll be able to spend some time this summer taking a look at what we might need and how this goal kind of ties into that with that blended learning model. I will say, my teachers have gotten a lot of unexpected experience in using technology, and part of blended learning is building student independence. And that's kind of a really big piece of it and something that we've been working on. So that is my school improvement plan in a nutshell, because I know you all have all the details. And I'm here for questions. And it's really weird to talk without being able to see anybody.
Thank you, Dr. Frazek. Are there any questions from the committee at this time?
No.
No?
No questions, sir.
All right, wonderful.
Awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Frazek.
You're welcome. Am I free to go rally my children, because I don't know what they've been doing for the past half hour?
Oh, yeah. They were totally fine behind you. Yeah, they weren't doing anything behind you.
Don't mind, don't mind the kids, the dog, the tent. I don't know what's happening back there, so...
But before you go, Dr. Frazek, I just have a question for the committee, and I want to make sure that you're a part of it. So I was talking to Dr. Thompson earlier about the school improvement plans, and, you know, as we all know, they are developed, the principles in connection with the school council. But the law does say that, you know, the school committee should approve the school improvement plan, or if we don't approve them by default 30 days after it is submitted to us, it does be, it is approved by default. And in the fall, we didn't take a vote to approve them, so we kind of just went into the default mode. But I wanted to ask the committee, what do you prefer we do tonight and next week and the week after, when these are coming our way? Do you want to officially approve them or default after 30 days? Yeah, Joan?
If they're being presented, it seems like we should vote to approve or not approve.
Mm-hmm. I agree with Joan.
Okay. So then, is there a motion to approve the Quigley Middle School Improvement Plan before Dr. Frazek leaves this evening?
Motion.
Mara?
Yep.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Second by Dave. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, wonderful. All right, thank you, Dr. Frazek. So next on our agenda is Mr. Riley with the Prescott Elementary School Improvement Plan.
Yep, can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So I figured the best way is the first start was sort of an overview of where we've been in the past year with our last year's school improvement plan, and then sort of talk about moving into the future with our two-year improvement plan for 20, the next two school years. So this past year has been fantastic. Not only academically have we made a lot of progress, but I think structurally, we've really moved the district in a great direction. I think a lot of that is based upon, you know, obviously, alignment of resources with the override, and I think the first one is a prime example for how we've been able to do that. Our last year's priority area number one was common planning time. So I'm talking about time where teachers are able to sit together and talk about students, talk about lesson planning, talking about long-term questions, looking at student work. This past year, we put together as an elementary team, a schedule where all teachers received at least two 30-minute common planning sessions with their grade level. That's specifically talking about Prescott. That time has been invaluable. I think reflecting back just over the course of the past year, teachers have said, well, how did we do this before when we didn't have this? We've had a new Renaissance Assessment Program. We really fine-tuned and looked at our math program and structurally how that looks, and we also are piloting ELA programs. And so that time is really well-spent. To talk a little bit about how that is, how that's accounted for, is essentially at the Prescott, teachers develop a plan for what they'd like the next month to look like. So for example, if we were in school at the end of April, we, teachers would have sat together, I stayed in a third-grade team, and said, okay, what do we want to accomplish in May? In collaboration with myself, we look at what's upcoming, what things we can talk about, and we set a plan for the month of May to look at, like I said, anything academics, SEL, long-term planning. We have a cross-section of teachers that are on those teams, reading specialists, inclusion people, school adjustment counselors, our PE, library, arts, sit on some of those teams. And the conversations are really rich, and I think the things that used to be said in passing are now really dug into, and people are leaning on their peers for support and guidance, which is awesome. And the last point there is the feedback from staff was overwhelmingly positive, that this has improved their instruction, allowed for robust conversations, and moved their own instruction forward. The second priority area from this past year is similar to one of them that we'll continue to work on, and that's new and innovative instruction. So we had three grade levels participated in the pilot programs this year. It was fantastic having conversations around how each of those programs were helping our students learn, which may be the best fit for Norwood. And the other thing is that every teacher in the school was able to observe the other pilot programs in action. So I'll give you an example. 5th grade did not participate in a pilot. They were able to go in and see 2nd grade do wonders, see 3rd grade do MyView, see 4th grade do NatGeo, and so they were able to sort of see those and think to themselves, how might this fit in my class or my grade level? Foundations has been fantastic. I think that's something that, you know, we saw, obviously, at some of the schools who had adopted it years ago, like the Bosch, and then some early adopters, that it's a great program. Teachers from kindergarten to first grade are noticing just a starting point that is so much better than where we were. And the last thing is Renaissance benchmarks, and so we've rolled those out, assessments to help inform instruction, and that's something that you'll see in this year's, next two years' improvement plan moving forward also. Priority, priority, priority area number three is response to intervention and the data team. One of the things that we've been really working on is finding a common time for teachers to sit down and talk about different kids. Some schools call that child study, some schools call that a student support team or SST, but looking at formative data, like foundations unit tests, Renaissance, talking about data on certain kids, but also talking about mental health needs or community resources that we may be able to leverage for that specific student. So this year, we blocked out an hour on Fridays for teachers to be able to come to their peers, talk about different kids, and it's a cross-section of people that represent the various departments in our building. So we have our adjustment counselor, nurse, reading specialist, sometimes it might include someone like an OT or PT, but it's a really great time for conversations, and it's not something that we have to go out of our way to schedule. We developed a comprehensive referral process, so teachers understand, okay, if I'm struggling giving instruction to this kid, here is the process, here is the timeline, here is how I go about engaging the team. And then the last area was environmental awareness. So one of the things that I'm really passionate about is, you know, allowing our students to understand their impacts on the environment and being that really concrete for them. So we have three garden beds at Prescott. We have secured funding for three more, which we're hoping to get over the summer. Many of the spring events that we had, like we had a really cool farm-to-table event that we were planning, a green team, all of that really good stuff when the weather turns, aren't necessarily happening, but it doesn't mean that we're not engaging in those conversations moving forward. Our Norwood Science Center team is doing a great, a great little activity in the coming weeks around sunflowers that we hope to then put into our sunflower garden at Prescott. And so those are things that we continue, and certainly planning on continuing in the future. So moving on, or I can pause for questions, or I can go right into this year's plan.
Any questions from the committee? Been a lot of shaking heads, so proceed.
So the first area, this, for the next two years, like you, like I mentioned before, is new and innovative instruction. And my approach to the plan this year was to try and figure out, obviously, we can't predict what the fall might look like, but how can we create a plan that will be able to be implemented in both a in-person, full-time, a blended, remote, a fully remote, that may evolve over the course of the year? We're looking at what some of the pillars were that we would be able to do over the next couple of years, regardless of the circumstance that we're in. The first one, the first area is effectively leveraging new and innovative programs, such as Pierce and MyView ELA program, which we're implementing in the fall, Renaissance assessments, which will be in year two, and Foundations will also be in year two. And I think a lot of times, we think about, okay, we've implemented a program the first year, we're good, check it off the box. Year two is when we start to hit that sweet spot, right? Teachers understand the materials that they have, they understand, okay, what didn't work in year one, that's go back and tweak. And so in year two, that's where a lot of collaboration, implementation of a program, like Renaissance and like Foundations, really happens, in my opinion. So one of the things moving forward, obviously, is continuing to do observations, and I talk a little bit more about that in one of my other goals, but teachers will continue to peer observations of the Pierce and MyView, having a hard time speaking tonight, sorry, Pierce and MyView at least twice a year. So the goal would be for our 5th grade teachers to go down and see Pierce and MyView in action in 4th grade, and say, okay, these are the structures that are in place. And as you look at those grade bands, the structure of that program may change a little bit based on the needs of the kids. So getting the teachers into those classrooms to look at how that program is implemented. Some of the other things continue to be grade-level data teams meeting to review things like Renaissance data and discuss instructional decisions based on that data. So when we look at that, that sort of assessment tool, the real benefit is being able to see, okay, where are the gaps in curriculum? Maybe one of the pieces of Pierce and MyView isn't great in this area. The data will show, we get the resources to plug that gap, and we sort of move forward. And the last one that I'll highlight in that area is developing a method to provide students with Tier 2 and Tier 3 instruction and phonics and phonemic awareness. So Foundations is a fantastic core program. What we have to do as a school is figure out, okay, if in the classroom, the child is not doing great, not understanding the Tier 1 to the entire class instruction on phonics, what does that model look like for pull-out? So maybe it is the reading specialist taking the kid out and doing what's called double-dose, which is what Foundations suggests, where they get similar lessons for a second time. It could be in the classroom, and that sort of model is done in a small group. We have to figure out what our goal is for those kids, what the resource might look like, and then what the delivery method is. The second area is response to intervention, and you'll see that in the top there, I aligned it with what the strategic initiative is, so you can see where it sort of vertically aligns to our five-year strategic plan. And that's establish clear tiered resources for both classroom teachers and specials to utilize with students, based on the needs of their students, as gathered by formative and substantive assessments. That's basically saying, we gather a lot of data on our students. Sometimes we, as educators, say, I don't know what the path is to go down next. We have to build the teacher toolkit of what that might look like. If a student is struggling with A, then here is a method to go. I'm not saying that we have to have a prescriptive method of follow the playbook of here it is, every kid's different, but we have to give teachers a sort of a tool belt to be able to pull off of when some of their kids aren't accessing the instruction. One of the best ways to do that is to look at trends from student work. Some of the things that I like to do is there's an organization called the School Reform Initiative. They have a great student work protocol where people, teachers, sit down and look at different student work and say, okay, what story does this tell about our instruction? Because that's one of the core things moving forward in that area. And the second one that I'll highlight is developing a master list of Norwood Public Schools endorsed resources that could be used in both ELA and math to support the in-classroom tiered instruction by the classroom teacher. So the answer for a student who's struggling isn't always, let's pull them out and give them instruction outside the classroom. It might be, here's this really great tool that they can use in the classroom to be able to, you know, fine-tune skills. There's many of us who we see something first pass, and we're like, wait a minute, I need to see that again, I need to hear it, I need to touch it, and we need to give the kids that same opportunity. And so having a list of things that we say, we've reviewed these, we vetted it, and this is a good resource for you to use in your classroom. Area 3 is something I'm really proud of in the work that we've done so far, and that's the area of professional learning. And so our goal here is to continue to develop a robust professional learning community at Prescott by soliciting the professionalism in the building and the district to allow for teacher growth. We have a bunch of experts in the building that do really great things every single day, right? And so sometimes, we don't know that that's happening next door, and that's the same probably everywhere, but that's probably the most frustrating thing as a school leader, to be able to go in every day to 14 classrooms and see amazing things, but sometimes those things don't connect, right? And so what we have established, obviously, over the course of the past two years, is instructional rounds, which is something that I've really pushed with staff, and they've embraced it going in, and sort of, the first time is the hardest, right? You go in, you're like, I've never been in one of my peers' classrooms, what are they going to think? And then once that happens, then it becomes normal. The idea of instructional leadership team is something that I think probably will be on my school improvement plan for multiple years to come. I think that the leaders in the building are those who are willing to be vulnerable and say, yeah, let's talk about this, or let's break this down, or hey, can you come and observe me and give me some feedback, as a peer, not as a supervisor? And so two of the things for next year is that we'll continue to do book studies. We had a great book study this year, which was a book called Culturize, fantastic book out there in the education world. We met about two times a month as a group. We also had Jill Milton, Stephanie West, who joined us, and just talked about what the application to that of our practice was. We had another group book that we had chosen to start at the end of March. We sort of talked as an instructional leadership team and said, that would be great, however, there's a lot on our plates, so I did not fault them at all, but that is definitely something we'll pick back up come the fall. And then the second area, again, that I'll highlight in there, is conducting the observations of teachers getting out of their classrooms and getting to see the great things happening in the building, because truly, every day, every minute, there is something great happening in the building, and it's awesome for teachers to see that from their peers. And the last area is student enrichment programs, but it's not necessarily the enrichment that we think of, of let's bring in a program, but I'm talking about really educating the whole child. So the goal there is to continue to create, maintain an environment in which students' diverse backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected, supported, and celebrated. That is done every day, but this is calling attention to the fact that this is where we should be focusing our energy. This is an SEL goal, and listing out some of the action items that you see on my plan, things like increasing opportunities for the school adjustment counselor to co-teach SEL lessons in the general education classroom. That is a proactive strategy that we're using, and we started to use this year, where, you know, our adjustment counselors in front of the class, leading those discussions. Not only are the kids benefiting from that, but the teacher is also benefiting by watching a mental health professional deliver hands-on SEL lessons to their kids. We use the Open Circle program, that is our commitment. They've come out with some great resources, and as those continue to come out, it's important that as we get new staff, we continue to have those people trained, so that we're not waiting, we're going to say, wait a minute, we have been officially trained, and we can't implement it. So that's one of the things that goes sort of with the rest of them. And the last thing is another thing that we started this past year that we'll continue is that the Classroom Library Refresh Program. I've discussed it here before. It's really important for me that kids are able to go into the classroom libraries in their own classrooms and choose multiple texts that reflect who they are and who they identify with. I think looking at those books, having those conversations, teachers taking a look at their libraries and saying, geez, I wonder if there's something in there where a kid can identify with a character. So this is the second year in a row that we've had every teacher spend $500 of our textbook money, excuse me, to refresh their classroom library. Next year, that will continue with a look, a real critical look at what's in there and continuing to fund that initiative. So those are the four areas. Again, my goal was really to say, I don't want to be pigeonholed into, okay, all of this has to be done in in-person learning. I believe that all of these can be done, whether, no matter what environment we're in come the fall. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to talk about these with you, and I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Questions from the committee at this time? No? All right, everybody is saying no, but thank you. I think that was very detailed, and, you know, what you just said at the end there, Mr. Riley, about needing to make sure that it applies... And, you know, what you just said at the end there, Mr. Riley, about needing to make sure that it applies to a number of scenarios, all of which are a little unknown right now. Is there a motion from the school committee to approve the Prescott improvement plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
All right, so next on our agenda is Mrs. Ferrera with the Ball School Improvement Plan.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Happy to be before you to present the Ball School Improvement Plan for 2020, 2022. So we have a two-year plan as well. I'll quickly kind of overview what we did for 2019, 2020, and our status updates on that. And then, like Brian did, go into our 2020, 2022 plan. So our priority areas for the first year, for last year, were very similar. You know, we participated in the ELA piloting. You know, we had three teams in the building that worked on each, each program that we were looking at, similar to what was happening at the Prescott. We had teachers try to see each other, teach the other programs, and if you were not piloting, go in and see what was going on with the three programs. Our staff involved with the professional development meets over the year, and coming to the conclusion of picking My View with the rest of the district. So that goal was accomplished. The next goal was a priority area for us when looking at sort of our MCAS scores and some of our literacy scores. We wanted to improve writing at the Ball across the curriculum. So I met with the teachers in the beginning of the year, and we agreed that we were all gonna have the same or similar professional learning goal, and that was gonna be in the area of writing. So across the year, at the Common Planning Times, teachers met in grade levels, they met with the reading specialists, the ELL teachers, and they formulated their reading goals, and then the work that it would take to get to where they wanted to go. So they did things like shared, shared student work, calibrating scoring of, scoring of writing, and just increasing opportunities for kids to write in the classrooms. As we were moving towards the spring, we were moving more towards more formal MCAS practice for grades three, four, and five, looking at old questions and having kids practice those. But then, we all know what happened, and that kind of went by the wayside. But we did, I think we did pretty well, and I've done that a couple of times, is having the whole school focus on one goal in there. You know, just at their level, they can vary it a little bit, and it really does help to anchor all of our meetings, our Common Planning Times. Some of our, our staff meetings would be a focus on the writing and, and sharing of things. The other thing that we worked on was, you know, that I think all of the elementaries had a similar goal around Renaissance, getting our people up to, up to learning it and administering it. As a matter of fact, we're going to be administering it remotely for the first time next week, in looking for, as Brian said, those trends and those gaps that will help inform us in our work over the summer in preparation for the fall. So we were able to do that. Another goal we had was continuing to work toward improving student learning through innovative teaching practices. And probably, as you remember, in the first year with our partnership with Views, my school had four early adopters in it. We continued this year with two more in the next cohort, in that their work has spread out among everyone at the school, getting them excited, and was a great lead-in to remote learning for us. You know, we were, I felt like because we've been doing innovative practices for the past couple of years, that we were in a pretty good situation. At least there was somebody on each team who had a, a map, a little bit of a map to go towards. And then the final one was Common Planning Time, and utilizing that to the best of our ability. Again, you know, a lot of the goals in 1920 were a direct result of the override and what we could do because of the override money, including the ELA programming, the Common Planning Time, the Renaissance, all of those things. So Common Planning Time for us was the same type of thing, where most of the conversations prior to Common Planning Time were on the fly in the hallway. And once you, we were able to create these, these schedules that gave them an hour embedded. Some of them, they got 30-minute lunch and 30-minute Common Planning, and some of them took their lunch into their Common Planning by choice. They didn't have to, but they had guaranteed half hour twice a week minimally, and some actually got three minutes, I mean, three comments, 30 minutes. And again, we included everybody, you know, so ELL was in, Special Ed was in there, Gen Ed, you know. So, and then the specialist, music, art, gym, they would know, the schedule was posted for everybody, and if they needed to talk to a grade-level team, they would jump in and email and make sure. So Common Planning Time's been a great thing. The one thing going forward for me personally, the best way I could connect with Common Planning Time, because it's over the lunch period, and we don't have enough stipends to do lunch, so I do two lunches, I can't be at the Common Planning Time meetings. So the way that we keep an agenda is through Google Docs, and they contribute when they meet. We talk sort of ahead about ideas and directions I want them to go, and I respond in the document. And on occasion, I would get to one, because it wasn't all of them, but looking forward, I would like to change how I scheduled it, so that at least one day, one meeting time per week was out of the lunch area, so that I could get to them. So those were my priority areas in last year's plan. And I felt like they were very connected to both the override money and how we spent it, and therefore, the beginning of our strategic plan as well. So one thing I did do, I updated, and I'll send you the updated copy after some of the feedback that Dr. Thompson gave us, is I did link my new priorities to the strategic plan, just so we can have that in common across the board. But are there any questions about what we did a year ago? It's pretty, pretty much everyone. So going forward, in the two-year plan, I have four priority areas. But one of the things that struck me, instructs, strikes me every year, is the way that my demographics have been shifting and changing. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but we have moved from, basically, 30s, let me look at this number, hold on, the high-needs group, which is that economically disadvantaged ELL and Special Ed together in your school, we've jumped up 70.3% of what was considered in the high-needs category. So last year, we were at 63.8. So every kind of graphic, we've gone up in certain areas. You know, ELL has gone up, we're at 49.7% students whose English is not their first language, but for servicing, we're at 35.4%. So our numbers are hot, just, you know, it's just every year, if you look at the trends across the years, you can see economically disadvantage moving in the diversity. Just, it's just an interesting look. So my four priority areas this year are, you know, obviously, we have to learn and implement My View. So now that we've made the elementary decision, or the district decision to go with Pearson My View for reading at ELA, we will be participating in all of the PD around that. A lot of our Common Planning Time will be about calibrating the work around that with our teachers and things like that. So in, by getting that Pearson My View, that connects to 3.2 and 3.4 in the strategic plan, which are core instructional programming, alignment, and things like that. Some of the work around that outside of, is also the, the teachers, because My View is the same exact platform as Envisions, the students are very familiar with how to get into that in an online format. So my teachers, who didn't even pilot it, are using it in remote learning, because it's been an easy transition for them to get kids into My View, and also for themselves. They recognize how to assign things and how to utilize. So it's been kind of nice. I think that they're, they've gotten a head start because of the remote learning, to be honest with you. Not all grade levels are doing that, but you know, definitely at my school, my grade-two team is doing it, grade-four piloted it. So they're doing it, and other grade levels are dipping in. My next priority area for next year, this is kind of jumping off of my innovative teaching practices, but it's capitalizing on the new learning that we acquired during the school closure period to continuously, continuously develop and improve remote learning plans to supplement in-school blended and personalized learning activities. I need to, I think it's silly at this point not to put a goal that's gonna talk about how we're shifting instruction and how we're shifting our planning. And one of the great things that came out of also Common Planning Time is that not all teams were naturally working closely together, you know? And by having this little head start with Common Planning Time now on their schedules, and then to move to remote learning and have to be so connected and collaborative because of the learning plans that we're putting out, I just think it was almost fortuitous that we had this opportunity for Common Planning first, and then we went into remote learning. So that, that kind of struggle that happens with teams that aren't as tight had already been handled in a Common Planning Time live environment, and now they're working together. So our goal is to look at all scenarios and kind of plan for whatever. You know, we're assuming that there's gonna be some remote learning, some in-face with learning. And even when they're face-to-face next year, we assume there's still gonna be a lot of connection with the computer, so that the kids can have some personalized independence from you and not share as many materials, obviously. So that will be part of our work next year. And that connects with 3.5, which is leveraging technologized technology to optimize one. Yet last year, one of the members of my school council, he works for a educational company that does surveys. And he, we were just in the process, before we left, our last two school council meetings were developing a survey that we wanted to give out to the families of the Ball around climate and safety and all those kinds of things, and it never got off the ground. So we just pushed that into this learning plan and hope to get that accomplished next year. So looking at how parents are feeling, parents and families and students are feeling about the school culture and climate and their safety in our school, and then responding to that. So that's our third goal, and that connects to 5.3, which is the safe and supportive schools strand in our strategic plan. And finally, goal number four, I've been wanting to do more with this, but having, you know, the override and non-override stuff and all that. So we're able to kind of settle into where we need to be. But in with my numbers, I really wanted to dig into culturally responsive practices and see where we could go with that. So goal number four for us is increase the capacity for cultural responsive practices that encompass all aspects of school life. So, you know, hoping, we have done a couple of book clubs as well in, at the Ball. We had done one, my first year there, Teaching with Poverty in Mind by Eric Jansen, and had some really great dialogue and applications to our students in our building. And so I hope to grow that by using Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Zaretta Hammond next year, and explore some of those pieces, and really get people to understand that this isn't a cultural diversity program, it's a cultural responsive practices, which is very different, in how, connecting to how kids learn, and how culturally kids have different ways of expressing. We can tap into that and get them to tap into that for themselves, can only benefit their learning. So those are my four goals. I don't know if you have any questions or anything like that, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferrera. Any questions or feedback from the committee at this time? No? All right, is there a motion from the committee to accept the Ball two-year improvement plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Mara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks.
You too.
And last but not least, for tonight's school improvement plan.
I could just thank you all and save you 12 minutes.
Well, thank you for joining us, Mrs. Sappola, and you're here to give us the two-year improvement plan for the Cleveland.
Right, thanks for having me. You know, our first and primary goal is actually, what I did was I combined my goals. I talked about how, how much we accomplished last year, and then kind of the ongoing goal from there, how we were gonna look forward. So mine are kind of condensed in each goal. Our first goal, obviously, is social emotional learning. We're really concerned that when kids come back to school, in whatever fashion that is, that we're gonna have some children who are not ready to learn, and we have to recognize that right from the, right from the get-go. Many of the children will be children that are not our typical irregular children, that not irregular, you know, atypical children. They're children who are gonna look perfectly fine and be there with you, but we're gonna know underneath that, you know, these are kids that are struggling with what they've just gone through. It's not just the classroom, but it's the home life, it's the parent, and it's the pandemic that they hear on TV. So I think one of our goals, last year, part of our old school plan was to form an SEL committee and to design a matrix for what behavior looks like throughout our school, and we did accomplish that. So we now have those teachers, therapists, and school adjustment counselor in place, and that group of individuals will continue to look at our school and look at those children who we have coming back, and possibly identify a screening tool or some type of an emotional scale to identify those most vulnerable children that may not stand out. So I think that our major focus as school begins, in whatever fashion it does, is on the SEL. My second goal is related to our RTI program. We do have a school, SST, school support team that meets every Friday. And you probably know that our numbers are higher than any of the other elementary schools in regards to special education referrals. So what I'd like to do is really take a look at the, and the last three years of data we've collected and try to figure out, what is the common pattern, what is the thread here that's causing us to have so many children go into referrals? And then, with that information, look forward and say, okay, what kind of a multi-tiered system can we put in place to provide support for these kids? And we do have a lot of extra resources at our school. We do work closely with the RSVP volunteers. We just received Title I last year. We also have a daily sub that comes in, and many times, we don't use the daily sub because we don't have someone out. So I really would like to look at how we use those extracurricular people and see if we could kind of do some targeted instruction with certain children, so that in grades one and two, we could kind of fill in those gaps before they get to grade three, which is the year that most students are referred for Special Ed. So I really think the focus would be on grades one and two to get this tier program into place. So that would be my second goal. My third goal is pretty much what everyone else talked about, which was My View coming into play. Last year, it was Renaissance, getting teachers trained in Renaissance, as you all know. Next week, we will be giving the final Renaissance for the year, and all of our teachers have mastered how to use that program, and most of the children have as well. We'll be doing the same for our new ELA program. And I think, as Brian mentioned, after the first year, we do look at that program and say, you know, did it, did it touch our struggling readers? Are there gaps there that we need to fill in? Or can we provide some additional centers or activities to support those students that are still not making it, regardless of the type of program that we've provided for them? So I think that, that'll be a two-year project to really get to know the program, and then to move forward in designing some additional curriculum to meet the needs of those kids that still aren't making it. My fourth goal was previously was to change my classroom setups to move more into 21st century learning with flexible seating and comfort. Unfortunately, now with the way things are going, it looks like we're gonna be putting our desks back in and taking our tables out, because we're gonna need six feet of distance between. So I think that part of that will be on a hold, although I thought that we had met that goal, because we did by the end of the school, school year, as it was in March, we did have flexible seating in all of the classrooms. We did have stand-up desks, we did have beach, beanbags and whatever. So we met that goal, but I think we're gonna be in hold for that goal. Moving forward, as you probably know, we're adding an additional first grade, so we'll now have 17 classrooms, which is really crunching our building. So we are going to be combining what was our computer lab and our library. They used to be two different locations. We are now merging them to make one media center, so that it will free up what was the library, what was the computer lab, and we'll be able to use that space more effectively for other small group teaching and learning opportunities. I also would like to look at the rest of the building and come up with some kind of a model plan for the future, because it's pretty clear that we need to utilize our space better, because our numbers do continue to grow. And I don't think many changes have taken place in that building since before I was there, and I think it's time to really look at that building and say, you know, what spaces are not being utilized as effectively as they might be able to be. So it would probably be the first year kind of working with Paul Ricardi to come up with some models, and then the second year kind of, you know, putting them into, implementing them. But we are moving the library and the lab at this point, and hoping for that for September, so that we have more space for our new first graders coming in. for September so that we have more space for our new first graders coming in. Um, my final goal um was, in my previous goal, it was to get our kids more connected to the community, and we met this goal particularly with our PLC students, which are the ones that we feel really need to be able to connect with the community. Um, they were able to get to go shopping this year, they visited libraries, they actually took over all of the recycling yard to help out the custodians, but also to learn how to be socially appropriate in a mixed company, and also to actually feel productive in our school by helping out um and doing a job that they know was a real job. Um, so we kind of accomplished that goal. We also connected with the Norwood Hospital throughout the year. We've made a cut more than at least two or three donations to the hospital through what children have donated and what staff have donated. Uh, we recently donated a hundred and sixty Clorox wipes to them that we had collected in our building, which was kind of silly because now we need them back. But um, Paul Riccardi's assured me that they'll have plenty for September, but initially we didn't realize we were going to need them, and many teachers had them in their classrooms, and were more than happy to donate them at the time. Um, so moving forward, you know, we'd like to increase our efforts with the community, but we'd actually like to focus more on the EL population. Um, as Diane mentioned, our EL population has also increased over time, and uh we don't really feel that we have enough translation services to strengthen our homeschool relationship with those parents. We'd like to invite new families that come in and provide them with a um, you know, like a buddy family or mentor family that can help them to navigate um the district events, the resources that are available in the district, as well as the classroom um happenings. We recognize that when they started to do the um three free meals, that there were many parents that weren't aware that they were um there for their, for their taking, so to speak. Um, and it took us quite a while to contact. Um, I think Teresa's aware of that, but we really worked hard to try to find those parents and families that we knew really needed our help, but they just weren't aware of the programs that we had offered, that you had offered. So um, so those are my goals for this year. And the next year, um, our staff has worked extremely hard over the last three months. Uh, I think people are well aware of all the work that teachers put in, and I'm really confident that they'll be ready and eager to start again in September regardless of how that works. So I thank you for your time, and I hope everyone stays well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Capola. Any questions or comments at this time from the school committee? No? This meeting might go on record as the meeting that we, say the least, myself included. Okay, is there a motion from the committee uh to approve this three-year school improvement plan from the Cleveland?
So moved.
Thank you, Maya. Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. That's Unana's. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Second.
All right, Dr. Thompson, uh superintendent report and late agenda?
Yes, so uh, we'll, we'll start with a late agenda item. Um, I, I have been kind of informing the committee uh about some budget um look sees that we've been doing. Uh, we do have uh the ability and have made the uh, the move to uh order the uh computers for the uh, the computer lab at the high school that is used by the Career Pathways Program. Uh, for those of uh, a few at home, um, that was part of the override uh money, but because we also received a good portion of grants, we received two grants from the states for that program, we did end up a little bit extra of that account, which allows us to uh use uh some of that money for the Career Pathways uh program in that computer lab, which would then allow us to uh take that off as a capital request. So um, I would ask if the committee would consider uh making that uh, that change, and that would be one less capital uh request coming from the school department.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
So moved. That's a, that's, that's nineteen thousand dollars. It's that computer uh request, one of the, one of the three we were going to go to a spring town meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dave, can you, you were making a motion, I believe?
Yes, I'm making a motion to remove that from the capital outlay request.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Maya. Is there a further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Unana, that's great. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, so I will, I will communicate that to uh, to the um general manager and uh, and FinCom and and Mr. McQuade uh tomorrow. Um, so the, currently the administrative team uh is working diligently in order to prepare for the great unknown, which is what uh school could possibly look like uh for next year. Part of that is uh talking a lot about curriculum, moving to a curriculum that um is, is more uh project-based, more integrated, more engaging. Uh, we are in the process right now defining that. Another piece of that has been working with the town for their, with uh some of their CARES Act money uh to purchase the uh, the, we, we're purchasing Chromebooks, but through this, we'll be able to make sure that we have uh Chromebooks for every child grades one up. Um, we're basically a year ahead of schedule. Uh, the rationale behind that is that with um trying to keep services clean and distancing and all that, uh, having computers that are not assigned to a particular student would be difficult. If we had to go uh fully remote, we would have the, the mechanism to do that so kids could work on their projects. Uh, this will be a, be a good amount of summer work uh over this to really revamp our, our curriculum and come up with a model that is flexible enough to be used uh face-to-face or fully remote or some sort of blended uh piece with that. Another aspect that we are working on, uh, and actually was, was mentioned in the commissioner's uh meeting today, was that schools should be buying PPE. Uh, we will need to have more protective equipment, we will need to have it on hand, uh, and that if we do not order that in the next couple of weeks, um, we will have a supply chain problem with that. Uh, we don't, we don't know what uh September is going to look like. Uh, I just heard from the commissioner this afternoon that uh the DESE uh is not going to uh submit guidance until the middle of June. Uh, we are at the point where uh we need to start planning for some big pieces such as equipment, such as a model of instruction that's going to be flexible and engaging. Uh, and we need to start that work now so that we're prepared to do it um over the summer. Um, so the other, uh, the other, yeah, so that is basically, I actually combined three into one. So that's uh, that's kind of my uh, my report at, at this point uh in time. Um, I have to say that the administrative team, we're going to move into uh some committees and look at different pieces of this. The hardest piece without the guidance will be how do we actually do it? And even the commissioner was saying, we really are probably not going to know what September will look like probably until late July or August. Um, I know that's not what anybody wants to hear. Trust me, it's not what we want to hear either. Uh, but again, where we are depends on how we do uh with, with keeping the infection rate down. Uh, and I will again remind people out there that social distancing is extremely important. I know the summer, uh, the weather is here, people are tired of being uh tied down, but if we don't do that, we still do not have an effective treatment, we do not have a vaccine. The only thing that has changed is that we have squashed the curve once, it could start curving upward again if we are not careful. So that is uh, that is my, my report at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions or feedback for Dr. Thompson at this time? No? All right, so moving right along on our agenda into budget, uh, we do have a number of budget items again this evening with Ms. Sheridan. Uh, first on the agenda is the Chartwell's contract amendment. Um, Ms. Sheridan, do you want to take us through that?
Yep. Uh, hello, everybody. Um, as you know, we currently have a food service agreement with Chartwell's, uh, which began on July first of two thousand and nineteen. Um, the agreement has a clause in which the parties made by mutual agreement renew the agreement for up to two years, um, and each of these years require an amendment to be signed. Uh, so the process is that the business manager reviews the budget with the district manager for Chartwell's, which I did, I sat with Aaron Long, um, went over the budget. Um, we went over the budget projecting business as normal, which is all we can do given the uncertainty of the current state of affairs. Um, and then uh we'll review the budget again when we have more information on any of the changes for the future. Uh, Chartwell's is asking for a three percent increase on their administrative and their management fees, uh, which is in line with the food service agreement that we signed on August sixth. Um, and the process requires an unsigned agreed upon amendment to be sent to the Department of Ed, Ed for their approval, and once it's approved by the Department of Ed, then the amendment will then be signed by Chartwell's and the superintendent. So um, I did give you a copy of that amendment. Um, I think I al- also put in a copy of the um actual food service agreement that we did sign. Um, and on page eight of the original agreement is where it indicates um the increase um for the administrative and the management fees. Um, so we're just um requesting that we get a um vote to move the food service agreement through with this amendment, and then we'll send it to Department of Ed for uh them to review.
I'll make a motion to make that, to do that approval.
All right, thank you, Maya. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Happy to second.
I think all three of you second at the same time, um, but I heard Joan, so Joan second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, wonderful. Five zero. Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to the second, which is the end-of-year report.
Yes.
Let me pull that out. Um, so uh, the FY nineteen end-of-year final audit report has been completed, um, and there was um two findings in the audit. Um, the first one was that the prepaid tuitions, which were uh prepaid in FY eighteen, were not added back into the FY nineteen end-of-year report, which resulted in the report being understated. Uh, this amendment, there's an amendment that has been completed, it was corrected um immediately, and uh that is all done. Um, the second finding is um that for the municipal expenditures that result in services directly related to the school committee, the Department of Ed compliance supplement requires a copy of the written agreement between the school committee and the municipal officials documenting it, agreed, agreed upon metho- methodologies to be used when allocating, distributing, and assigning municipal expenditures to the school. Um, as you recall, we implemented an agreement which we signed in FY twenty, thus this would be a finding in fiscal year nineteen. Um, but in FY twenty, it would not be a finding, but for fiscal year nineteen, because it was not signed until fiscal year twenty, it will be a finding. Um, the auditors did note that we did have um that, that we signed in FY twenty. Uh, one thing they noted that they, on the agreement that we did sign, um, uh, under the general administrative services, um, they want me to add, uh, we have fourteen ten, and it should be fourteen ten and fourteen fifty. Um, we had the description for fourteen fifty, which is technology stated in the description area, but we only had fourteen ten for that number. So they said just to add the fourteen fifty, um, and then that um agreement would be fine. So um, I do have an agreement to sign um, to sign for that, so we can get that finding. Uh, so that finding will be completed. Um, the other thing on the cost agreement between the town and the school, um, when we did this cost agreement with the town and the school, um, we did it for the period ending through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. We did it just for one year, and the reasoning that we did that was because we thought maybe the joint, the joint facilities um was a little bit up in the air at that time. So we didn't know if we were going to be adding um more in the joint facility section to this agreement. But at this point, I think that would be okay to sign this particular agreement again for one more year, and then we'd have to revisit it at the end of fiscal year twenty-one to add the, the joint facilities with the town to this agreement um for the fiscal year twenty-two. So um, I thought this might be a good time where we had the final audit report um to bring that up, so maybe we could sign this agreement so that we'd be completed um for fiscal year twenty-one. So I did um add that to your packet as well um to sign that. Um, if anybody has any questions on either the audit report or this cost allocation agreement?
Yeah, Dave, can I? Oh, I thought you raised your hand. Okay. Any questions for Karen at this time? So I, I do think we want to um vote to sign that agreement though, again, correct?
Yes, we need to, you need to sign that, the first one with the amended number on it, um, and then it, for the um fiscal, the other one that will go through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and then I'll send it over to the town for them to sign.
Okay.
So motion to um sign those letters as Ms. Sheridan recommends?
All right, thank you, Maya. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Mara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great, thank you. Uh, so moving along now to budget transfers.
Okay, um, we have three budget transfers. Uh, there was one added at the last minute that um hopefully Priscilla put in your package. Um, the first one is uh the, the Special Education Department had estimated that they will need um seven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the remainder of school year for their special education legal bills. Um, they requested, there's a budget transfer request um in the amount of three thousand two sixty-nine. I'm going to take it from the school business manager salary to the administrative legal services. On the school business manager salaries line has the money available due to the pro-rating of um my salary as I started in August of two thousand and nineteen, so I thought that would be a easy transfer. Um, so that is the first budget um transfer request. Um, the, let's see. That school business manager line right now has thirteen thousand nine one nine that would be available, and the legal fees at the moment ha- only has three thousand, three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine. So that's the first one.
Questions or a motion on this budget transfer?
I, I only have one of the budget transfers uh in my drive.
Um, are you looking under the, the folder for budget? Like if you go into the folder for tonight and then into the budget folder, I, they should all, all three should be there. Does everyone else see them?
Okay.
Yeah. Three.
Are we all set with that one? Do you want me to do the other two and then do a vote on all three, or do you want to vote each one separately?
Uh, you can keep going, Karen, if nobody has questions, and we can vote at the end.
Okay. Um, the second one, um, let's see, um, as part of the override expenditures, um, a request has been made to purchase thirty student services iPads in the amount of twelve thousand eight ninety-nine. The category would be the personalized learning. Uh, the budget request is from the school textbooks district, district-wide account. Uh, that's where they held um all the override monies, and then it would have to be moved over to the special education equipment um in order to be allocated to the proper account. Um, so that would be um, the textbooks account now um has an account balance of sixty-one thousand sixty-one, so it definitely has the money in there, and that would be moving twelve thousand eight ninety-nine. So again, that's to purchase thirty student services iPads um for, for um the override personalized learning category. And then the, um, go ahead.
Oh, oh, Karen, I think Maya has a question.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Karen, I thought you were done, but I did have a question. I just wanted to see, as I understand what you said, basically, we aren't changing the intended use of this. We had always expected to um, you know, this was part of what we planned to spend override money on. It's just a question of getting the funds in the right account.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, it, because I won't let, well, it would, if I put it in that account, then I'm back to doing more recode, so I'd like to do a budget transfer before I get it in the system. So that's one, and then there's one more, um, which is uh the one that um the superintendent was talking about earlier, and that is um the override money that they want to buy the high school Career Pathways Computer Lab. Um, so that is the override money, for some reason, put that into the social studies textbooks account. Uh, so that's going to be transferred into the school instructional hardware devices account, um, and that is in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I'm, I'm sorry, nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. The amount, the amount of money in that account is twenty-one thousand nine twenty-seven. So again, that's for the high school Career Pathways Commute Computer Lab.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Further questions at this time, or is there a motion to approve these three budget transfers?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you, Dave. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Maya. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that unanimous? Joan's second, I think you, all right, perfect, five zero. So moving along. No, that's okay. All right, so five zero approval of those budget transfers. Excuse me, moving along, under the agenda is bus fees and reimbursement. Dr. Thompson did send out an email to all of us, Ali, this afternoon, and I copied that email and linked it on the agenda, so you should see it in your Google Drive as well. Dr. Thompson, did you want to start to talk about this, or is Ms. Sheridan gonna?
Yeah, I can. So we, so we basically, we've received a couple requests for reimbursement of bus costs, so we were asked to, to go through and kind of look into that. So currently, we transport on the Connolly buses, which we have our bus contract with one thousand six hundred and thirty-two pupils. The contract with Connolly costs one million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars a year, and that's each year over three years. So the cost per student is about seven hundred and sixteen dollars. The bus fee is three hundred dollars, and that's if you're paying the full fee, that is not if you got a discount because of low income, that is not if you got a discount if you paid early, you can get twenty-five dollars off. We collect approximately, we, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bus fees. So, you know, basically, both by bus passes, and again, you can only, you can only charge for certain ages and certain mileages. So, you know, basically, that's the, the bus fee only caught, only covers about forty-two percent of the costs it costs for us to transport. We did transport students for at least two-thirds of the year. We are currently still paying Connolly, we have to, and we've had this conversation before, if we don't have bus companies, we have to go time transporting kids. So just doing a quick, you know, back of, back of the envelope kind of calculation, so two-thirds of three-hundred is basically a hundred dollars left. We're paying about fifty-eight percent of a hundred, which is about fifty-eight dollars, so it's about forty-two dollars remaining. The reality is, is that these forty-two dollars, and that's a best-case scenario based on people paying the full fee, those forty-two dollars are going to be needed all over, because we're looking at increased costs, we might need to try to hire extra buses, we will definitely need to be cleaning buses, and if we raid that account, we're probably going to be in trouble. So if you look at the percentage that is actually covered by the bus fee, if you look at the percentage that's actually back, I don't particularly feel that forty-two dollars is a lot to ask to carry over based on what our increased possible expenses will be next year. I do realize the committee did get this information rather late, so if we do have a meeting next week, if people want to, want to sit on this, I'm perfectly fine with that, but I definitely wanted to have it presented to you and to the community for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Questions or discussion from the committee? Yeah, Maya?
So, I mean, by my calculation, if we were to reimburse people that forty-two dollars, it would cost us more than thirty thousand dollars in the direct reimbursement, plus the cost of the administrative overhead of trying to figure out how to reimburse people, because people, it's not like we're just going to be like crediting back to a credit card or something like that, that's, it's all a paper system, and it's all checks, and we'd have to, you know, mail, like, you know, stuff envelopes and mail things out. And I just think that, you know, given that each family that paid three hundred dollars for a bus pass, you know, receive, would have received transportation that would have cost more than seven hundred and sixteen dollars a year, and that they did get transportation for two-thirds of the year, and we do have these extra costs, I just don't think that we can really afford to, to reimburse. And I'm, I'm, I think it's not something that we've done in the past when, if a student has left the district, or a student has had a medical need or something like that, that means they can't ride the bus, or, you know, they join a sports team and now they stop riding the bus, like, we don't give reimbursements, we don't, we don't do partial years. If somebody, you know, asks to buy a bus pass in November, they don't get a prorated rate, it's just a flat fee. So I am afraid I feel that we need to say no to bus fee reimbursements.
Thank you, Maya. Mara?
Yeah, thank you. I, I definitely see the, the question about the affordability of it. However, off of Maya's points, which I, I agree with the idea of if, you know, if someone paid for a full year, but they stopped using it because of sports and things like that, we can't get into partial reimbursements. However, this seems like a, a different circumstance to me because the service isn't being offered. Like, to me, that would be different because the student had, had decided to, for various reasons, not use the service any longer. But in this case, it feels, to me, you know, I, I take the, the family's points who are reaching out for reimbursement, that due to circumstances obviously outside of anyone's control, the service is no longer being offered. So it feels like, you know, paying for something that is, is not being provided for, for several months, I, I, I think it, it would make sense to, to reimburse. I mean, I am very cognizant of the, the fiscal issues that, that may arise, and the also difficulty in terms of the manpower of implementing it, but it, it strikes me as if we're not offering it, we can't expect people to pay for it.
Thank you, Mara. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote, but I don't have anything to say. I don't know where that falls.
Say that again, Joan, you're not ready?
I'm not ready to vote, I'm still thinking through the both sides.
Okay. Dave Patania, do you have your hand raised?
I hear everything of the argument, I think maybe we should, this is coming up, maybe we table this the next meeting and let people email us for the public forum regarding this issue, because I mean, forty-two dollars might be significant to some, maybe insignificant to others. You know, I, I hear both sides, and it's tough. I mean, I like to say that this money that we owe people is still going to support our bus program, you know, but if people desperately need it back, I understand that as well. I think we should just give the public more time to, to voice their opinion, should they so choose to, either by emailing us, or, or publicly, public forum.
Okay, yeah, Maya.
I, I just want to, like, just say that, like, when it came to extended day, that fee, that program is self-funding. And so, you know, whatever people paid for, that's what they got. And so I totally agree that, like, you know, we should offer to roll their money over to next year, do things like that, you know, give reimbursements if they need to. But in this case, it's not, the fees that were collected do not pay for the entire program. They, you know, like I said, the, the cost of running it is almost one point two million dollars, and we, you know, we are only collecting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So like, this is just a small offset of the, of the cost of running the busing, and so I just, that factored into my decision as well.
Thank you, Maya. I think Joan wanted to share something.
I, I do, I have a question. Are we mandated by the state to continue paying for the leasing of the buses?
The bus contract?
Yep, I know we're continuing to pay Connolly, and that is because we're mandated by the state, correct?
Recommended by the state.
Okay, recommended by the state.
Strongly recommended by the state.
Strong, right.
Right, and, and again, you know, there's, there's two things here. If, you know, we did, you know, go through a negotiation and got a reduced rate for this, but, I mean, i- if you think back to the bus contract, we only had two companies bid. I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of bus companies out of there, it, out there. So if bus companies go under, when we need them, they will not be there. You know, so that's, that's kind of the, you know, kind of the, you know, the issue there. The, the other, the other issue for me, looking forward, you know, and not that thirty or forty thousand dollars is going to make all the difference in the world, but if we have to sanitize buses every single day, that's quickly going to disappear. So the other question is, if we're going to start reimbursing, are we also going to have a conversation next fall about raising fees, because we're going to have a funding problem? So, you know, I mean, so we could look at it, if someone's rolling forward and rolling over, that it's actually kind of prepaying, you know, what we perceive as, as an increased cost. And we're also doing other things to try to position ourselves to handle that, but, you know, it's just something to consider, so.
No, I was, I was just, in terms of continuing to hold the money from families who paid for the services this year, and thinking about a prorated, I think it makes sense. I think I would be more in favor of providing reimbursement if we did not have the associated costs with that. I mean, we are still paying for buses that we are not getting. And that, that feels very different to me than decisions around extended day. And I don't like either of them, I wish Desi had not made a recommendation, but I understand that we need to keep the infrastructure there for when we do actually need to have the buses. So that was my, that was my only contribution.
Thank you, Joan. Dr. Thompson and Ms. Sheridan, I know, you know, when we were looking at the issue of the bus contracts, Ms. Sheridan, you collaborated with some colleagues in other towns to work on that. Do either of you know where other towns are on this issue? I've seen a couple articles through the MASC was served with other school committees who voted to not refund buses, bus fees. I have not seen any articles of school committees who voted to refund, but I'm just curious, you know, Dr. Thompson or Ms. Sheridan, in your networks, what are you seeing and hearing?
I, I have not heard of any reimbursement, that doesn't mean that people have not done that. Most of them have been around spring sports, it did not happen. We were different, we didn't actually cash or put in the checks, so we either mailed them home or ripped them up, but that, that's the one main reimbursement piece that people did do.
Yeah, I do not know, I don't know either, but I do, I don't know anybody that didn't pay the bus contract. I mean, everybody's paid the bus contract. And not only that, you know, there's talk of next year, it's going to be less people on the bus, so that'd be more cost as well. You have to clean the buses each time, so it's definitely going to be more cost.
If we, if we did a reimbursement, what would that actual mechanism look like? Because as Maya pointed out, it's a very paper-based system, and, you know, as we, as we know, it's in the town of Norwood, like, our, our county system isn't easily set up for those reimbursements. So, you know, what, what was Mr. Bishop's, Al Bishop's in transportation, his feelings on this matter?
Well, his feeling is that he's, he does not recommend the reimbursement. There's also, there is also a handful of people that did not pay yet, that still haven't paid for the whole year. And the reimbursement, geez, because they don't have it through the system, would have to go through the payables. I'm not exactly sure how that would be, it would have to go through the payable system.
Yeah, it, it would be a lot of.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of work to do that. And, you know, and we need to have a system to, to do bus pass, passes, we do not at this point, but it is something that we are working on.
And we're also working on the online payment for all the other athletics and preschool and extended day that is not offered right now, but we're working on that currently.
So as a school committee tonight, are we in a place, so do you want to make a motion, or do we want to table this and then come back to it next Wednesday? Yeah, Dave. Oh, Dave, you muted. You muted.
Sorry about that. So I'd like to make, we just table this for one more week so we can receive public comment.
Right, is there a second on that motion? I'll second it for discussion, so any further discussion on Dave's motion?
I'm, I mean, I'm fine with, with tabling it for, for a week.
Okay, so all in favor of tabling this discussion until our next meeting?
Aye.
All right.
Yes, okay, five zero. So if, if you, first, the school committee, you have further questions or anything that you want Dr. Thompson and Ms. Sheridan to look into, please email Dr. Thompson tomorrow, that way they have some time to look into it. And then, as Dave Patania has said, if anybody in the community would like to reach out to us, they can, you know, communicate with us at that email address that we have set up for public forum, which is MPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12.us, and that is printed on all of our agendas. Okay, so last budget item this evening, we have a budget subcommittee update on the FY twenty-one budget. In your packets, you do have a memo from Tony Mazuko and also Dr. Thompson. This was a memo that FinCom had really requested at their, not their meeting last night, but their meeting last week, I think on Thursday. And then, this was discussed at FinCom meeting last night. But Maya, do you want to kind of summarize for us what happened at the last FinCom meeting, and why we had this memo in front of us?
Sure, so there was a meeting on Monday, I think that was the eighteenth, and at that meeting, all the FinCom members were expressing concern about what revenue we can actually expect for FY twenty-one. As you know, in a typical budget year, the state budget starts with the governor's budget in January, and it's a pretty safe bet that whatever the governor's proposing for local aid, which includes chapter seventy education money and the unrestricted general government aid, that, that is kind of the floor, that you are guaranteed at least that amount, and then generally, when the House comes out with their numbers in April, it's a little bit higher, and then the Senate comes out with their numbers in May, and there's often some negotiation between the House and Senate, and finally, the budget passes sometime, hopefully in June, but often in July. This year, of course, all bets are off. After the, the governor made his budget projections before the pandemic hit, after the governor made those suggestions, there was another meeting convened to estimate revenues for the coming year, and they were obviously estimated to be lower due to all sorts of things. You know, uncertain support from the federal government, and, and then, you know, loss of revenue in income tax, loss of revenue in sales tax, loss of revenue in meals and hotel tax, all of that. So FinCom was concerned about our revenue estimates, and unfortunately, the state is saying that they will not be making a budget, approving a budget until July, and town meeting has to approve a budget by the end of June, and so this gives us problems. So we decided that, well, so FinCom offered, said that they would really like to revisit some of the revenue projections, and so town manager Tony Mazuko created this, this memo for all, for the three major boards to talk about his recommendations for changing revenue projections, decreasing revenue projections, and then how the town budget could be adjusted in response. So you'll remember that for local receipts, which, so I guess for, for the, I already started talking about state aid, so let's talk about that. State aid, typically, it has not been the practice of the state to ever reduce chapter seventy money to a particular town. So we were projected to receive an additional one point five million dollars here in Norwood in chapter seventy, but we're now thinking, well, what if we just don't get that extra one point five million, but we're back at the same level we were at before? And then the general government aid is down to ninety percent of what we got last year. That would be significantly lower than what we had. That would be significantly lower than what we had anticipated. Um, about two million dollars less, um, in, uh, state aid they're looking at. Um, and then, uh, the other thing that they're looking at is what if the, um, local receipts go down? As you know, local receipts include things like motor vehicle excise tax, meals and rooms tax, licenses and permits, and all of these things can go down, um, in a recession. And that, you know, is, we are facing difficult economic times. And so, um, we are in a good position in that we had, at a town already, chosen to be more conservative in our estimates about local receipts in prior years. Um, we had looked back to the last completed fiscal year and assumed we would stay at one hundred percent of that level. So for example, that would mean that when you're budgeting FY twenty one, you would look back to FY nineteen and assume you'd get a hundred percent of that amount. And, um, everyone had been feeling that that was too aggressive, not just do, just in general, not anything to do with the pandemic. This was before the pandemic, and we had reduced that estimate to ninety one percent. So of FY nineteen. So that was helpful that we already had a little flexibility there. And, um, so now we're looking at what if those three categories that I just mentioned, the excise tax, the meals and rooms, um, excise and the licenses and permits, if that goes down to eighty five percent of total re, of the FY nineteen receipts? Um, so that reduces the revenue by about seven hundred thousand dollars based on what we had estimated before. So, uh, so what we're, we said, you know, we really want to plan for possibly two point seven million dollars less in revenue than we originally anticipated. And so if we did that, Mr. Mazuko made some recommendations for how to adjust the, the budget in response. So one thing is, um, this was already planned even before the last FinCom meeting, is that some of the capital outlay items that had originally been planned, um, are going to be delayed. We had originally, the capital outlay committee had voted to spend about two point six million dollars in free cash on capital. Those things will be postponed to preserve our free cash to give the town more flexibility. Um, or at least most of those things will be postponed, and then some of them will be borrowed for. Um, the other things that Mr. Mazuko recommends is, um, to pause our additional retirement catch up. Um, the proposed budget had called for five hundred thousand dollars that the town was preparing to contribute above and beyond the required pension fund to try to get closer to full funding. And, um, so Mr. Mazuko is recommending that we pause that. We don't do that this spring. It could still be done in the fall if, um, revenues come in better than we think, but it gives us more flexibility. Um, there was supposed to be a stabilization fund contribution of four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, and Mr. Mazuko is recommending that we pause that as well. That's the general, um, stabilization account. Um, he's also recommending that we pause contributions to the override stabilization fund. So the override stabilization fund, you remember when we did the five-year projections? We said that in year two, we wanted to still be putting money into that stabilization account. We were projecting that we put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars according to that five-year projection. So for year two, we'd put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But this year's budget had looked pretty good, and we were planning to put in seven hundred thousand dollars into that, um, override stabilization account. Mr. Mazuko is recommending that we pause that whole seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, he points out that that override stabilization is currently, fund is currently at one point two million dollars, which is ahead of our projections. And part of the reason why it's ahead of the projections is because you'll remember last fall, the school committee voted to take that five hundred and nine thousand dollars that had been in free cash that was going to be added to our budget, and that was moved to the override stabilization account. So we kind, in some ways, you could argue that we really already made a, a contribution at least equal to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had projected to do for this year. So he's say, suggesting that we hold off on that extra seven hundred thousand, at least until the fall, till we have a better sense of what state revenues look like. Um, and he's also recommending that we, um, utilize about a million dollars in free cash as a stopgap measure to, um, to keep the budget going in, if revenue, if there are revenue shortfalls. Um, we expect that there will be, you know, not decreases in our expenses, but some increases in our expenses, both on the town side and on the school side. And, um, at, during this time of pandemic and time of extra needs, um, it's not the time to cut back, um, is the, is Mr. Mazuko's strong argument in this, um, document. So, um, the other thing that is really important to the schools is that, um, he's recommending that we kind of def, that we approve budgets, but we defer some spending. So there's some things that, on the town side, for example, there's some roadwork that was proposed to be done. And, um, he's recommending that we put that off at least until the fall. We know more what revenues look like in case there needs to be a mid-year, um, budget reduction, which we would all like to avoid. Um, and as you know, the, um, Student Opportunity Act was passed, um, and was supposed to be funded this year, we expected. And in that case, we were expected to create that Student Opportunity Act plan, and we approved that last meeting or the meeting before. And, um, but that included, um, that plan was for about five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of that was supplanting things that were normally in the budget. And about three hundred thousand dollars was for things that we were going to do specifically with that SOA money. And so, um, what Mr. Mazuko is recommending is that if that SOA money doesn't come in, that we don't do that three hundred thousand dollars worth of spending. And so, um, hopefully that money does come in, that, that, you know, I hope that there is enough support from the federal government to help keep states going, because states do have requirements to have, um, balanced budgets, and the federal government has more flexibility. And if they chip in money now, I think they can avoid, um, some really disastrous outcomes. So, um, I personally am strongly advocating for more federal response. Um, but I think that, um, this is what, um, Mr. Mazuko is recommending, is that we can absorb a two point seven million dollar reduction in our revenues without having to, um, really reduce our operating costs. And more importantly, without having to actually dip into our stabilization accounts or anything like that. And, um, e- even with this, we would be left with approximately two point four million dollars in free cash left over from FY nineteen. It's possible that we will generate some more free cash in FY twenty. I know that at the last FinCom meeting, Mr. Mazuko had said that, even though meals tax obviously has taken a hit in FY twenty, um, at this point, we have already hit our FY twenty projections. So we were trending ahead of our projections. And so even though, um, restaurants have obviously really scaled back since mid-March, um, we as a town have still, um, received all the revenue that we expected to, um, for FY twenty. So that's good news. We also have one point two million dollars in the override stabilization account and five point five million dollars in general stabilization, even after we do all these things. And so, um, he's not recommending any further budget cuts at this point for FY twenty one. There's a big question, what will happen with FY twenty two? But we'd like to try and first get through FY twenty one. Any questions?
Thank you, Maya. Um, questions at this time?
All right, so FinCom did approve this last night, and I don't think it's anything that we as a school committee have to approve, but we wanted to make sure that everybody was, um, aware of what's been going on in collaboration with the general government. So thank you, Maya, for that, that summary. Uh, Dr. Thompson, is there anything else about FY twenty one budget at this time?
No, no. You know, we've all, we have, um, I don't know who's echoing, but we, um, you know, we, we're also looking at our spending for next year. And, uh, currently, you know, we have, uh, broken down some of our spending into thirds. Basically, what, what do we need to, um, have to start the year? You know, and, and again, it's one of those things where, you know, we might not be using that much paper, because we might be, um, you know, I hate to say it, Joan, close your ears. You know, we might be at, at home again, um, for, for a period of time, or we might start at home and then open up and then close again late fall. So, you know, we're not quite sure exactly what we will need, and we need to make sure we have, uh, funds for the disinfectants, funds for masks, funds for these sorts of things. So we're being a little conservative with how we are approaching the summer until those state numbers come out. And the prediction, as, as Maya said, is, um, is, you know, middle, middle of July, which is crazy. But e- everything's crazy. So we might as well, we might as well get used to, uh, you know, certifiable crazy at this point. But that's, uh, but just to let people know that we are looking at being conservative. Normally, normally it's good practice to, to, to buy your supplies upfront, because you're buying in bulk, you're only paying, you're paying less than shipping, and it's more cost effective. But if you're not necessarily going to need all of that, um, then, you know, we need to be a little conservative with that going forward. We need to use the money differently than what we've used before. So supplies might not be paper. It might be masks this year. Um, so we will, uh, so we'll know more as we, as we get closer, so.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Um, so unless there's any further questions around the budget, that does conclude the budget section on the agenda. It's quite a lot tonight. Um, we don't have any old business items. Uh, we do not have any policy items tonight. Uh, but just so the committee knows, we are meeting as a policy subcommittee on Friday morning. Um, and we will be bringing some things forth to all of you, um, next week. Uh, so new business on the agenda, I had legislative advocacy. Uh, back in January, I think, um, Joan had recommended that we take a look at some legislative advocacy, um, you know, pre-COVID nineteen, before all this stuff happened. Um, and it was on our agenda for our February meeting, and then it got bumped to that March meeting. That got canceled, and then we never came back to it. So, um, it was kind of a topic as a, as a committee, we said we wanted to discuss anyway. Um, but with everything going on, um, many of the things that Maya just alluded to with the state budget and also federal funding, um, I didn't know if the school committee at the time, if we wanted to draft letters, um, either statewide or, um, at the federal level. Um, and then, um, apparently I'm not the only one thinking about letter writing, uh, because Tony Mazuko, uh, drafted a letter, um, that he had emailed me this morning, and I forwarded it to everybody as soon as I got it, and it's also in our packet. Um, he drafted a letter that he is asking, um, all the chairs of the four different boards, Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, the Finance Commission, and the Board of Health, um, to consider signing. Um, so, A, are you okay with me signing the letter, um, that we have before us, um, that Tony Mazuko put together? Um, and then B, are there other types of advocacy that we as a committee, um, want to consider at this time, either statewide or at the federal level? So what is everybody, yeah, Mara?
Um, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine with signing the letter that Tony Mazuko, um, drafted. And I, I think it, it addresses the, the concerns around cutting funding, both on the general government side and then also on the school side as well, considering, um, the specific crisis. I would, uh, just personally, I would be hesitant about going further on other advocacy at this point, because I think it strikes me that both federal and state, and pretty much everyone at this point is just so focused on dealing with the current crisis, that I think, you know, sort of holding off on, there, there's a number of other things I'd like to be advocate, advocating for in terms of both funding and policy. But it strikes me that now might not be the, the, the right time.
Okay. Other thoughts at this time? Yeah, Dave?
I definitely echo those sentiments. Um, I think that if we, uh, the need is well aware, you know, there's, there's nothing more that we can say at this time. I think we should reserve our, our advocacy for a little bit later than, than the present.
Okay. So, um, yeah, Joan, sorry, Dave, you off?
No, you didn't. I just, when is too late, right? Like, that's just kind of what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, and, and I mean, it, it's something I know we've talked about doing in, in different capacities before, and, and maybe the issue before us now is, um, different in the, uh, severity of it or, or what items we want to prioritize. But, um, I mean, with, with Maya, you know, her point of, um, federal funding, I mean, this, this letter doesn't address the federal funding. So is there, is there something? Um, and you know, I can, I can write letters on my own as myself and not as the school committee on my own opinions. But it, but are there things at the federal level that we feel we want to really put in writing and, and advocate for?
I, I just, I, I feel like that's hard to answer at this point. Um, simply because just personally, and this is something the committee might revisit in the summer, but until we know exactly what the plan is around going back to school in the fall, I think it's, it's a little hard to know what we might need to be advocating for. I mean, if, if the idea is that we are going back, and there's going to be social distancing and things like that, I think we could certainly be asking for additional funds around revamping schools as needed to, for additional, um, seating or whatever it might be to achieve the six feet social distancing. We might be asking for additional funds for PPE, things like that. I mean, I just, um, I, I worry that at this point, we don't almost have enough information to know what it is that we're gonna need. Um, that would be my, I mean, I, I take Joan's point of like, when, you know, you don't want to push everything down, down the road because of the crisis. But I think until we know exactly what we're dealing with, it's hard to know what to be advocating for.
Okay. So, um, I guess the first thing that, you know, I would not want to sign without the approval of the committee is the letter from, from Mr. Mazuko. So, um, you know, Mara, I said, I know you said you'd be okay with that, but is that a formal motion, or does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to sign.
All right, thank you, Mara, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Joan, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, all right, so I will sign that letter, thank you. Um, any other thoughts, uh, for tonight on the issue of advocacy?
Maybe that's something we can talk about in our policy subcommittee, um, and bringing, oh, a more targeted list to the bigger committee, to the committee.
All right. That's, that's a good idea, Joan, thank you. All right, so moving along on the agenda, uh, we do have some donations tonight, Dr. Thompson.
Yes, we, let me, uh, just, there are two donations. Uh, the first is from Bay State Textiles, where we have collected district-wide six hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. And the second is a Harvard Pilgrim mini grant for, to the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, and that is going to, uh, go towards buying materials for the, uh, PLC classroom at the Cleveland School.
Is there a motion to accept these two donations?
So moved.
Thank you, Mara, is there a second? Seconded by Maya, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. Okay, so at this time, we do have school committee agenda. Um, Dave Patania, do you have anything this evening?
No comments this time.
All right, thank you, uh, Maya?
Um, two things. Uh, first, I want to, um, congratulate our graduates who will be graduating this Sunday. I'm, uh, looking forward to class day, our virtual class day on when, on Friday, and, um, the graduation on Sunday. So congratulations to the class of twenty twenty. And, um, the other thing is I want to remind everyone that the town election is coming up on Monday, May, uh, June eighth, which is a week from Monday. And, um, absentee ballots are still available if people would prefer not to vote in person. But I also know there has been a lot of work done to, um, make a, a no-touch election and, um, keep it as safe as possible for those who do choose to vote in person. Um, and if you are not yet a registered voter, you have until Friday to, um, register to vote for this election.
Great, thank you, Maya. Uh, Mara, do you have anything?
Can I just do one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Voters Candidate Night is tomorrow night at seven PM, and that will be on NCM.
Thank you. Uh, Mara, did you have anything this evening?
Uh, yeah, I just want to echo Maya's congratulations to the twenty twenty seniors and to congratulate them. and to congratulate them on a, a momentous achievement, even though it might not look exactly as we all imagined graduation to, to look like. It in no way takes away from the momentousness of the occasion and the hearty congratulations that should be offered for all of the accomplishments. I also just want to kind of give a, a general sort of, you're doing great to all of the staff, the teachers, the students, the families. I know that we have been doing remote learning now for quite some time, and I know that it's getting nice outside, as can be witnessed by my sunburn on my face. But just to sort of say, everyone's been doing great and to, to keep it up for the, for the last push as much as possible. And just to say, you know, congratulations on making it this far to everyone. And, you know, we're almost there. So, so that would be the, the only comments I would have for tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mara. Joan?
Maram, I've basically said everything that I was going to say. Congratulations to the graduating class. Thank you to everybody who continues to work to make remote learning successful and productive, especially to, I, I always, I thank this, the staff tremendously. But I also thank the parents who continue to exercise patience, who can, who continue to engage in open communication with the teachers, and everybody in the whole district who's going into this with a spirit of adventurism. And I almost said adversity, but what I meant was resiliency. Yeah, hand in hand. And I also want to continue to thank Food Services for all of the work that they are doing, because they're still finding, someone, someone in Food Services is still finding the energy to decorate the little bags that they give out for the school lunches with all these like really cute, hand-drawn, like you're awesome messages. And I just have to say thank you for that. It's a good reminder, after 12 weeks, 11 weeks of, of doing this, that little, little things can make a big positive impact. So thank you.
What is this patience you speak of, Joan?
I said, other people have it. Other people have it, and I thank them for it.
No, because I'm out of it right now. I also just want to congratulate this senior class. Yesterday, I was up at the high school in a socially discreet way, in the front of the building, recording my speech for the graduation. And I'm obviously not graduating, I'm obviously not a parent of a senior, but it was still emotional to be there in front of the high school, giving the speech to Jack Tolman, who assured me I did a great job. So I guess we'll find out on Sunday. But it, it was a hard speech to write, because I, I was just pondering, what on earth do you say to the class of 2020 when a pandemic has drastically changed a very significant and emotional transition? So I, I thought for a long time, and I, I won't give it away, what I said. It was under four minutes. I kept it as brief as I could. I can be wordy, as you all know. But I, I do really send my best to the senior class, and I've been thinking about them tremendously. And just a shout out and a thank you to Dr. Galligan and his team as well, because I know that so much compassion and thought and genuine care has gone into the plans for graduation. And I think that all of that's going to be very different. I think it's going to be very special.
True.
So I do not believe we need to go back into executive session. Right, Dr. Thompson, we're, we're good.
No. I know, I know you're all really disappointed with that, but yeah.
All right. So 9:03, we can conclude our meeting if there is a motion to do so.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Great. So we will see everybody again next Wednesday, June 3rd. But have a good week.
Good night, everyone.